I'm going to order the March 2019 meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. I'd ask our chairperson, vice-chairperson, to give us some indication.
Father in heaven, we want to thank you for this day and we want to thank you that we live in the country that we do. It's not a perfect country, but I think we're trying anyway. Please be with us as our first responders and us tonight in this meeting. We again thank you.
Thank you, Harleen. So we have a slight change to the agenda since it was first published. Other changes?
We did make a minor modification. My apologies to Vice Chairman Botha. I didn't give you a heads up either, but I figure this was really minor compared to what you got on Tuesday. So, you know, ours was more just a ritual, you know, following that at this point. But I did add that it actually had to do with, we were hoping to receive it in time before you left your award and we did. So I've added that to the agenda.
Courtney, may not be as fancy. Ours is more important. It may not be as fancy.
Ours is fancier, actually. It's coming from me and not otherwise.
All right. Move on to approval of the minutes. Have you all had a chance to review February minutes? Any changes, additions?
No.
So before I get to that, let me just... One of our regular members is not with us tonight. So according to my scrap of paper, Catherine, you would be the voting member this evening. Voting member in February. So I have a motion to approve the minutes from February.
Make a motion to approve the February 14th, 2019 minutes.
I have a second.
A second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That motion's carried. So we're going to move to item 5A. And Brad, are you going to introduce this for us?
So I'm Brad West with the Morrisville Planning Department. Tonight, we're going to talk about the Lane Use Plan update, specifically Phase Five of our process, which is sub-area planning. You may remember from last year, we talked about how we're going to look at Morrisville holistically, but there are three specific sub-areas of Morrisville that are ripe for, excuse me, development and redevelopment, and thus require deeper level analysis. And so what we've had, Halsey Levine, our consultants, do is prepare some preliminary land use arrangement scenarios for each of these sub-areas. We're actually calling them alternatives. Each of these three sub-areas is going to have two land use alternatives. And so they're going to walk through each of these sub-areas, show you the two alternatives, and then we're going to take about 20 minutes to sort of have input session for each of those sub-areas. And then, once that's done, we'll move on to another sub-area and so on and so forth. We're going to ask you to please try to keep your comments concise as possible so that everyone just gets an opportunity to speak. I should say that these alternatives, even though they're very preliminary in nature, they are largely based on public input received thus far from this process. They are based on the, also based on the sub-area workshop that we did back in December. They are based on the Technical Advisory Committee workshop that we held also in December. And lastly, the market analysis that Halsey Levine has done, which they will talk about briefly here in this presentation. So I will go ahead and, no, I should also say, sorry, that these are going to be used as sort of the foundation of more detailed renderings for the draft Lane Use Plan. So these are sort of the first phase, first step of this process. And so, once they get a clear direction from the board and town council and what a preferred scenario would be for these three specific sub-areas, they'll move forward with a highly detailed 3D rendering, which is going to be pretty exciting. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Halsey Levine.
Will you do that, Brad, if I may? While we're still at 30,000 feet?
Yeah.
Can you just remind us how the sub-areas were defined?
Yeah, so these are originally defined in the 2009 Lane Use Plan. Thank you for bringing it up. So these were areas that we knew were going to require some deeper analysis. And so we did a 2013 Transit Small Area Plan for the TOD area at church at corner of NC-54 and McCrimmon, bounded by a church on the west, southwest. Also, the McCrimmon Extension area, that was one of our largest swaths of undeveloped land. We knew that back in 2009 that that would definitely need some closer examination, especially since we built some, or we're currently building some significant infrastructure improvements in that location. And then, of course, Town Center has been an ongoing discussion for 15-plus years, at least since I've been here. So that, of course, would need more discussion as well. The TOD East area, which they're going to get into here in just a second, is east of the existing TOD, main TOD site. So the site that we've all thought of as the TOD, which is that northwest quadrant of, and they'll show you on the map, of NC-54 in the McCrimmon Extension, or McCrimmon Parkway area. We also included in our 2013 Transit Small Area Plan that TOD East area, but it was never, residential development was never allowed. So we're revisiting that in this plan.
On that particular one, TOD West is a given.
It's a given. That's being carried over from the original 2009 plan. This would be east of that.
On the Town Center, that's a subset of what we have defined as the Town Center.
So our, yeah, I should clarify that. So their boundaries of the Town Center is somewhat smaller than our 2007 Town Center, it was in seven or six, Town Center Plan, which looked at a much larger area overall. They're focused on more of the supposed downtown or town core area of that original Town Center Plan vision. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Brad.
All right. Well, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Halsey Levine. I'll pull up the presentation here. Whoops. You can scroll down.
Is it okay if I go into full screen mode here?
Yeah.
All right. So I'm Devin Levine. I'm a principal at Halsey Levine Associates. I know this is the first time you've seen me here, but I have been overseeing some of the work done, especially in the sub-areas. And that's really my specialty, is the physical planning and urban design. So as we get into here and as Brad mentioned, as we get into 3D, I'll be intimately involved in that aspect of the project. And so glad to be here, walking you through these alternatives. And I think something I'd like to reinforce, preliminary at this point, we're high up, we're talking about land use, not the, I guess, the physical development. So there'll be plenty of opportunities for you and for the community to weigh in as we start to become more specific and more detailed. Even still, even after this plan is adopted, the types of planning that we do here in the United States, we say, you know, we're not Dubai, we're not master developers. The town isn't creating a development plan for these parcels. We're establishing the long-term vision of these parcels. So what we put into 3D isn't necessarily going to come to fruition. They're going to get the community excited. It's going to give everyone some expectation of what we'd like to see these areas become. And as you work with developers and development petitions are brought before you, you're going to look at this plan as sort of the barometer of whether or not they're sort of hitting the mark. And so it's something I think to keep in mind. What I'd like to propose, I'll walk through, there's three different sub-areas. I'd like to reserve maybe 20 minutes discussion for each. So, because I think we might have the potential to get bogged down on one and not get to the others. And so I mentioned to Peter, Paul and I have no place to go. We could be here all night. But I think in the interest, what we should do is maybe try and get through all three. I'll set a 20-minute time limit for each one. And then we can, if we don't think we quite close the loop on one, we can always come back to it after the final, the final sub-area.
On that front, Devin, would you like us to ask you questions as you're going through? Or you want to present and wait?
I'll just present, say the Town Center, and then once I'm, it'll be a quick presentation. And then after, we'll have, you know, 20 minutes of discussion, then we'll move on to the next one. So the three areas we're looking at, the TOD East at sort of McCrimmon and NC-24, that northeast quadrant, as Brad mentioned, east of where we traditionally have thought of as the TOD. We have the McCrimmon Extension, where McCrimmon Parkway is now going to head south, include that piece of land. And of course, the Town Center, where we are here now. We did an extensive look at the market. We have a couple of people on staff. This is their specialty. We use data sources from Esri, as well as a software platform we have called CoStar. We look at all that data and we analyze it. There's sort of, these bullets are presented in kind of chunks, if you will. The first one speaks specifically to multifamily. The sub-market is active in the construction sub-market. We look at the sub-area plans that we've prepared. They're going to capture a significant part of that demand. When we look at what's available in the RTP and RDU, or sorry, that's getting into office. When we look at the multifamily sub-market, we think there's enough demand. Where we get potentially a little concerned, some of the larger ones, like the McCrimmon East or the McCrimmon Extension sub-area, there's, one of the alternatives has a larger amount of multifamily. Same with if we do the alternative at the Town Center, that's a little more intensive. For those, we're thinking those might be a five- or 10-year build-out. But we see multifamily, strong demand here. Getting into the office sub-market, this is where I think we feel a little more confident. We know there's about 11 months of inventory and with some planned deliveries currently available. There's office in all three components. We think the TOD East and the McCrimmon Extension, those to us, we have stronger confidence in how quickly they'll be absorbed. The Town Center is where we get into a little bit of uncertainty, given the unique nature of it. If we're talking about a mixed-use area, when we look at the office market in the RTP and RDU, there isn't really a Town Center office market. So we don't know how quickly that's going to absorb in the market. And certainly, if we look at that more intense development in the Alternative Two, a little more uncertainty. So that is that land use. The, next, looking at retail. Again, it's strong. It's about 10 months of inventory. The proposed retail in most of the sub-areas appear to have the necessary market support. And then the Town Center, though, we think it's going to be a little more dependent on the success of multifamily. So within the Town Center, we're thinking of maybe more destination-type of retail, entertainment, restaurants that will certainly thrive a lot more if the multifamily comes online and sort of you have people living nearby to patronize the businesses. Looking at industrial, so the RTP, RDU sub-market, there's 8.7 million square feet. If we look at that five-year window, there's been, the market's been positive, there's been absorption. It looks like the last 12 months, there's been a little of a hiccup. But the five-year window gives us, you know, a little more confidence in the recommendation. I think it applies mostly to the Alternative One of the McCrimmon Extension. That might be, given the current absorption, that might be, again, another sort of five-to-10-year build-out. So we can touch on the market, we get to those individual sub-areas, but I just wanted to let you know, as Brad mentioned, a lot went into these outreach input, as well as the market analysis. So Town Center Alternative One, these Town Center Alternatives are really looking to make a focal point for the town, diversifying the uses beyond the public uses that are here now and the residential uses that are found on the east side of the sub-area. We're looking to introduce mixed-use development. And by mixed-use development, we mean ground floor, retail. The upper floors are going to be office or multifamily. Some, we're talking vertical mixed-use, not sort of horizontal mixed-use. The mixed residential, which is higher-intensity residential up on the north side at the, along Jeremiah. The single-family neighborhood is the area that's sort of largely intact in the southeast corner. The public and semi-public uses reflect the existing public and semi-public uses here now, the Town Hall, the Fire Department, the Police Department, the library under construction, the church, the churches on the east side. Key to this, we have a public gathering space right in the middle. So sort of a town green, if you will, sort of right here in the middle. So dedicated gathering space and then open space, some of the areas that we just don't see having the ability to build out and protected open space. So this, these alternatives really avoid the Town Center from becoming a campus exclusively used by the government and public uses. The difference between these two alternatives, it wasn't sort of an eye test when you just kind of spot the difference, because graphically, there is no difference. Where it gets into difference is we look at, how intense are we going to develop these areas? So one utilizes surface parking. The other one is, we're recommending higher-density uses. It's going to involve parking garages. How those get funded, we can work through, but when you start looking at how much space a surface parking lot takes up, just the overall square footage of commercial uses starts to erode pretty quickly with surface parking. And then we say, the important note we make here is the multifamily could include affordable or workforce housing as appropriate. So again, there's graphically no difference between Alternative One and Two, same type of uses, but we're going to like structured parking garages in centralized locations in Alternative Two. And with those parking garages would allow for more intense development of the property, taller buildings, and just overall more square footage, more dwelling units. I think the potential to be a more vibrant Town Center. Yeah, so I guess we'll stop there and we can have discussion, we'll sort of start our 20-minute timer if you, if we could, and really talk about this sub-area specifically and get your input.
The best way is to make it fairly open and less structured than some of our meetings.
I did have one question. So, single-family homes neighborhood that you said is existing one, but as we define the land use plan going forward, we could define it to be something different. And if they ever want to rezone it and if they ever want to sell it, it will probably come for rezoning.
Well, the goal, I think we've done our job well if we see a downtick in rezonings. So if we have a Lane Use Plan, we establish it. Most likely, the town will then do a town-wide rezoning for any parcels that don't match. This is what we've done historically. So we go through a rezone, and so our Lane Use Plan and rezoning are basically one and the same. And after that occurs, development should naturally happen based off all the visioning that went into this. If we start to see, for example, the area in yellow here, where we're saying it's single-family neighborhood, it's preserving what you have, tearing down what you have, building something similar in its place, we start to see townhome applications. One, that's not what the vision was showing, so they would have to have the justification behind it. But I don't suspect we'd most likely see that. And then I think we have even a less case for support to see that, because it's inconsistent with the vision of this process.
Yeah, so my question really around that neighborhood was, it's kind of at the intersection of two major neighborhoods, and they're very, 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 yeah, I understand that today they are single-family homes, but five years from now, 10 years from now, if they want to, you know, do something to the property.
Yeah.
I don't know if single-family home is the right choice for that location. That's, that's what I think, if we, could we use that space for perhaps, you know, parking, perhaps for, you know, some commercial use, mixed use, maybe a sports thing there, something other than single-family home? Because I, I don't know how many people will really go for something like that at that intersection.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we want to just sort of run through the other question, maybe around the difference in the parking. So do you have a sense of how many spaces would be in for what's proposed in Alternative One versus Alternative Two, and kind of get a sense of the throughput there? Well, so just, we walked through this with Brad. Just a real rough parking standard is about four spaces for every thousand square feet of office or residential. I mean, it varies, but that's sort of a, just a quick rule of thumb. So you're at about one space for every 250 square feet of commercial. If we get into residential, it's typically regulated by the dwelling unit. So two spaces per unit is probably, I would think, typical for a suburban community. A parking stall is about 200 square feet, adding in room for circulation. A quick back-of-the-napkin number is about 250 square feet for every parking stall. So at one space for every 250 feet and 250 feet per stall, you're at about a one-to-one building ratio. For every square foot of building, you're going to have a square foot of parking. If that's at a one-story building, if we start to go up to two stories, that ratio starts to shift to, you know, one-third of a site would be a building footprint and two-thirds would become parking. So the impact of parking starts to erode really the, call it the urban fabric and the potential of an area. Either way, I think what is going to have to happen to even get the bill form we're envisioning for the Town Center, you're not going to want to put the parking onus on a specific lot. You're going to want to, there's going to be some strategy, whether it's cash in lieu of parking, but if it's, if it's surface parking, it's going to have to be regulated. We're going to want to have, still have, not every single parcel providing its own parking, but still centralized parking lots that would allow us to get buildings up at the street to create a pedestrian-friendly built environment. The problem is, when you look at the impact of surface parking, it's not going to allow us to get a lot of upper-floor uses.
That's kind of the concern. I thought initially, we were looking at having a walkable, create that vibe, that it would be more of, not dependent on, you know, a lot of cars in that spot.
Yeah, I think with, without structured parking and with the current parking, you know, requirements, you're, you're going to be limited to one-to-two-story buildings at a maximum. There's an urban design principle that an outdoor, basically creating an outdoor room and sort of what is the perfect height-to-width ratio. And typically, it's about three stories for a 60-foot right-of-way is where you get enough sky visible as buildings. So there is sort of what's called a sense of enclosure, where your buildings provide a sense of enclosure and an area can really start to feel like an outdoor room. And those are the most walkable sort of environments. You get into like a big city where the buildings are too tall, there's this cavern effect. When the buildings are too short, there's so much sky available, you don't really feel enclosed. So a three-story is about the, the height of where a pedestrian starts to feel a sense of enclosure and pedestrian comfort. It's in a...
With that, is option Alternative One feasible?
It's all feasible, but is it going to get your desired vision, I think would be the right question. And if, it could still become a walkable district with a one-story building. Are we going to achieve the sort of, what the community is desiring? Maybe not. But there's, the other sort of trade-off is, a surface spot is 10 times cheaper than a structured space. And so, you know, it comes at a cost. And so that's, that's really the issue here, and we're presenting this to you, is for us to achieve the walkable, compact, vibrant Town Center, you are going to have to provide structured parking. We can still have a shopping district. I can think of an area, it was just at Mashpee Commons in Cape Cod. Real nice, walkable area, the buildings are one story. Behind every building, though, is just a sea of surface parking. But when you're in it, it's very pedestrian-friendly. But definitely, the full potential of Mashpee is, is the fact that it's all surface parking lots.
Do you have any experience of how residential development goes in structured parking? Because most people in residence would like to be able to drive their groceries up to the front door, not park somewhere and then up and down elevators and whatever.
So what we do know is rental units can rent with an outdoor parking space. A condominium owner almost certainly will want enclosed parking.
Those structured parking, as in?
Well, it doesn't, so what you do see are a lot of developments now where the first floor of a building is covered and the units are above, but what we lose there is any potential for retail or commercial buildings fronting the street. So your first floor becomes parking for the upper-floor units. Done a lot more cost-effective than a parking garage or parking structure. The trade-off, though, is, you know, we're going to limit ourselves in how deep we can go with commercial, how much commercial we can provide, because the back half might be just covered parking. We call that covered parking, as opposed to a parking garage. So you do see a lot of developments like that around the country, and we could definitely see it in the Town Center. Definitely on the, on the south side where the parcels are deeper, you could see that type of arrangement. So it may not necessarily be a parking garage. What we want to create in this area, though, is a park-wants environment. Someone parks, they get out of their car, and they experience the district. They walk around. They're not necessarily parking in front of the store or business they want to, they want to be at.
Catherine, what did you have?
Do we have the ability to go down with our parking?
I don't know. I, I'm not sure what the soils and the water table here are. I don't know if Steph can...
Not good, I think.
Yeah.
I do know they did some studies to see if we could go under the railroad track on Morrisville Carpenter Road, and the water table was fairly high there. But just because you have a higher water table doesn't necessarily prohibit you from going underground either.
Yeah.
Just understand that there's a lot of blasting that takes place here. So the more you blast, the more you're increasing cost. I don't know enough about the cost-performance to say if you go under, is it the same as going up at that? I have no idea. And then it varies on different parts of town. Is engineering the impossible? Yes, I just don't know if it's within the reason of cost.
I think we asked a similar question of a developer recently. They just responded, it's just not cost-effective enough compared with the desirability of that sort of environment.
Yeah, we've seen that before, but...
We've seen a lot of things developed there.
So the parking structure doesn't necessarily have to be hideous. I mean, they mostly are, but they don't have to be. You know, I think there could be a nice-looking parkers, parking structure. The thing I hate about parking structures is usually they're hideous. They're like, you know, Soviet-era parking or something, but they don't have to be.
A lot of cities now are wrapping parking garages with buildings, so you don't even really see them. You see the entrance off of the street, but... You see the entrance off of the street, but it's called, you skin it, you skin it with a building. And when we get into this, I mean, we can speak specifically to those types of recommendations for sure. So knowing that, yeah, we don't want this piece of concrete sitting in the middle of our town center, and I fully understand that. And that's the other thing, is parking needs to be available. It shouldn't be obvious in this area. Office park, totally different.
Putney just hinted at something I was going to ask. At some point, we are going to be faced with what to do with the railway intersection of that. It may be underground, it may be overbed, something or the other. Have you considered that possibility as part of this recommendation? And the railway traffic is going to increase as well. So some barriers, those kinds of things, and the bridge or underground, whatever for the railways line, have that been considered in recommending single-family home space there or anywhere else?
When you look at the footprint of the McCrimmon flyover, and you start to realize how much, how big of a footprint you need for a great separated crossing. Thinking of just Chapel Hill Road, I mean, there's just so much happening here. I don't think a great separated intersection is something that will ever be considered here. I think what you'd be looking at is some bypass somewhere else to put a relief valve on that intersection. Chapel Hill comes too close to the railroad, so to even have a great separated crossing, you would fly over that. So it's a bigger engineering project that would have to happen here. So we didn't really explore it. In terms of the sound walls, I would say with a single track, I wouldn't think of that as a high priority. The railroads have put in place quiet zone requirements, so if you want to train not to sound its horn, you can make necessary improvements. That's where I would, I guess, focus my efforts versus constructing a sound wall, especially for a single track.
So when it comes to putting the plan together for the land use, you know, a lot of the parcels that are listed as single-family kind of just represent the current condition of what's there right now. From a process perspective, are we putting this together with an intent to do a rezoning at one, like in one swoop to match that? Or is that essentially why we've left those as single-family residential? Because we don't want to force a rezoning on them to change their property value?
No, it actually had nothing to do with that.
Okay.
So, I mean, we basically gave them carte blanche to take what the market said could be viable, what people said they wanted to see. And I know there was a third component to that, and it's escaping my mind. But there was three things that basically went in, and we didn't give them a whole lot of direction. Really, staff just agreed with some boundaries that were provided of the area. You know, they said, is this the area that you would like to study? And we said, okay. Outside of that, it was taking all the other information, and this is what they came up with. Did provide additional information, since council's been talking about this with DFI. You know, council was looking for a decent green space for programming. Council also was looking at potentially less dense options that didn't involve tax dollars building a parking deck, which is really where your alternative in one and two are coming from, is how can you achieve a main street with, which would probably be more public investment and less public investment, which is really what this represents. But understanding there's trade-offs associated with that. If you get into a lot of what the public said, they wanted, the public wanted a place, a central gathering place, the public wanted. So you're going to see a lot of that, and you can achieve that in either one. They're just going to be, feel quite different when built, depending on which one. You know, and there could be some hybrid thereof of this as well. But it was taking, checking a lot of those marks that we heard of what people wanted to see, and recognizing that council had provided feedback that they didn't necessarily want to fund a, you know, parking structure, which then means other dollars are going in, and we have to be realistic that decks are not generally being built here.
One thing I'll add to Courtney's point is, the third pillar is existing plans. So they've incorporated, yeah, so they've scanned all of our existing plans, or a lot of them, and town center plan being one of them, which specifically recommends this area being preserved as a sort of historic village core. There's two or three National Register, I think at least two National Register buildings in that area. So they were sort of wanting to parallel that.
So our intent is to take the aging population of homes that are in that area, well, actually a lot of them aging to some extent, and continue that feel without changing the way that's put together today, so that it's still one unit per parcel that's in that area?
So the use would be single-family, correct? Yeah, continue.
Use would still be single-family, but we could, you know, over time, that could be replaced by townhomes, for example, in that same corridor.
So they're, so right now, they're recommending, they're showing this as maintaining the single-family use.
And detached?
Detached, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, detached, to match what's currently existing there. That doesn't mean that there can be, there can't be any tear downs of, you know, dilapidated properties or whatever in that area.
So replacing with nicer homes over time, maybe?
Sure.
But there'll still be a single-family detached in that whole corridor?
Precisely.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Having that detached, single-family, it would still be supportive of the necessary density that you need to support the main street area.
Sure. Thank you.
What you do see in areas like this, and I mean, I see it everywhere. I mean, a plan to come in and just sort of propose the development for all these single-family homes, it's a pretty sizable cluster in the headquarters. But you do see communities allowing adaptive reuse of these residential homes into like tax offices or salons, or, and they are a nice complement to a downtown area. So that's something maybe to consider if we want to sort of preserve the character and build form, but still recognize that the area might be a little more dynamic and subject to things like noise, traffic. A four-acre community gathering place might not be the best place to live. It might be pretty awesome to live if you go walk to restaurants and, but it might also be an area that's maybe in transition. And so what cities will do is designate these as single-family areas, but allow for special use for them to either be home-based businesses or converted entirely into an office, a residentially scaled office that's using the existing structure or compatible with adjacent residential uses.
I think what is, an example of that is in Cary, Dry Avenue and Harris Intersection.
Adam.
Yeah. Yeah, very much so.
All right, we're at about 20 minutes. Do we want to?
One more, quick one.
All right.
Seems to me one of the differences between alternative one and alternative two, obviously it's the structured parking. And I think you're saying that the structured parking would allow a larger amount of retail. What's your experience about, you know, how attractive an area this would be for retail? Would it be viable, or would it be a series of failed ventures with boarded-up shop fronts?
Well, the nature of retail is changing, right? I'm not, this isn't a prophecy. I mean, we know the impact online shopping has had on our retail areas. Where everything is headed to is more experiential, and so people are spending more money on experiences. And I don't know if retail's the right word, but which you're seeing a lot more of is more demand for restaurants, entertainment-type venues. So I think maybe a more accurate statement is the parking garages or intensification would allow this just to become a more vibrant area. And we are seeing a lot of, not only demand there and the impact of online shopping has had on retail, but just the cost of things that we used to have to save up for, like a TV, are now sort of spontaneous purchases. And it's a lot more disposable income on, for things like dining out. And so all the data that we have really supports sort of the experience, and we know the community is looking for a focal point. And that's where I think we'd be looking to kind of drive this town center into, not a retail area, but a destination. Where are we going to go eat? We're going to go to the town center. We're not going to specify the name of a restaurant, because we'll find that out when we get there. We'll park our car in a centralized lot, we'll get out, we'll walk around, and we'll find where we want to go.
I have to move on to the next one.
Am I missing something between the two maps?
No, they're identical.
They're all the same. Okay, all right. Just making sure.
Highlights magazine, where you have.
Well, you know, yeah, I mean, you're reading one, it says lower density, higher density, and I'm just like, but I don't see a difference.
No. Where you're going to see the difference, when we pull this up into 3D, and as Courtney mentioned, that's where you're going to really see the impact of these two.
Looking really carefully.
All right, so the McCrimmon extension, there's a, you'll see the difference here for sure. So this first one, we're continuing the existing development pattern. It's mostly industrial and flex space. We're maintaining the unified, the UDO airport noise overlay, which restricts residential. And you can see here, we have the, this, the competition center, we're expanding it south, really all the way to that Southport Drive extension. So it's a larger competition center. We're taking the creek, it's a greenway. We're looking for opportunities for trails and recreation along there. There's some retail or commercial uses along Airport Boulevard here on the northwest side, and then a small area along Aviation Parkway, and then some multifamily development right here at the intersection of McCrimmon and Aviation Parkway. Alternative two, we're going to seek to modify that airport noise overlay, add in multifamily, which we know there's a stronger demand for than industrial. So this might be an alternative that is more in line with the current market opportunities. So there's some industrial and flex space connecting into the existing industrial areas. But for the most part, it's dominated by multifamily land uses. We've also showed an alternative here where the competition center does that initial southern expansion, but then it's commercial at that intersection of the extension of Southport and McCrimmon. And then we also show a pretty sizable corporate campus or office, again, supported by our market. We see this as like a campus-like environment. So not industrial or flex space, but office, office uses. So it's a greater amount of multifamily and commercial uses, but again, it's probably more consistent with the current market in terms of a shorter-term implementation.
Can you start?
So you're not having to fight anybody. There are regulations that we have in place, there are land use policies. Now, do we follow FAA guidance? Yes, but we are not required by law to. So that's why this is put out here as an option.
Be an administrative decision through the planning department and town council to modify the airport noise overlay?
Yes, it would be an ordinance that would receive a recommendation from the planning and zoning board, of course, a recommendation from staff, and ultimately action by council.
But it's Marsfield's rules, it's not the airport's rule.
That is correct. I mean, based off conversations with the airport, no, they're not going to support it. But FAA-only land use, FAA really regulates are land uses that can produce, say, a manufacturing plant that has a lot of pipes. So they can produce their own basically environment and create fog layers. They will block it for those reasons, but really they regulate height. That is what they really regulate with us. Height and light, I think are the primary, too, that we'd see regulation here.
Comments, Tim? Questions?
Yes, you're looking at these individually, but thinking about alternative two with the greater use of multifamily. Is that, is it, you know? Kind of thinking, if that gets injected, if we went that way, does that then affect other multifamily uses in other places? Or, you know, how much of that can we support as a community?
There is some, or is it?
Yeah.
The more you build, the more people will come.
Well, that's the thing. I mean, these are all, you know, relatively. Where would we want to put? You pick alternative two on each, and you're.
I think typically the putting of the density along or beyond the roadway, because it keeps the traffic around the road, it keeps the entrance. As opposed to having to go through someone else's neighborhood to get there.
Well, I mean, it's interesting you say that. I mean, this actually makes sense in that you would have that.
Mostly a commercial and density.
You're going to build it up, you're going to the airport, it's a different.
Talking to some of the residents on Davis Park, on Davis Drive, for the doors, a lot of people prefer to stay there, even though it is higher cost and everything else, they prefer to stay there because the commute to work is not minimal. And to me, this option is, given that there is enough. Retail, that they can shop, there is enough, you know, sports-related activities that they can do. And it kind of is at the, you know, just outside the town boundary, when I say town center boundary, and it kind of creates one corridor all the way up there. If I look at option one, it kind of is more of what we already have, and I'm not sure all of that space will be occupied.
That's, I think, kind of part of the plan. The more we've segmented things time, so you have these big clumps of this here and big clump of this here.
Exactly.
And as much as Cary loves how they're organized, there's nowhere, hardly anywhere to work in Cary.
Because everybody.
So everyone has to drive way through town to get places, and that's part of the problem we have with traffic today, is just the amount of distance people have to travel. You put residential in here, you know, 100 yards from a main office area, there are a lot of them who are going to be people who weren't there.
Not to mention the airport, you know, hit airport, I mean, there's, I mean, look at the major employers.
Exactly.
CROs, what does CROs hire? CRA's, what does CRA's do?
Yeah.
So it's an easy throughput.
And people who are, live on Western Boulevard, they also like the fact that, you know, MetLife and all of those companies which have come on there, it's very, that proximity they enjoy. My only question, and this is perhaps not for them, but it's really that bridge where Morrisville, Long Beach, and there are but a single lane around the lake, right? Is that ever going to become two-lane there? Because that's the bottom, right? After.
By Crabtree.
By Crabtree, right? Because that's, to me, Airport Boulevard is already two ways, so people can exit that way. But that Airport Boulevard, sorry, Aviation Parkway is the bottom line.
It's just money.
And I don't know what environmental situation is there that they can't expand.
Causeway, and the plan is to make it.
Okay.
That's part of what DOT is doing, I think.
Eventually, right?
So if you ask me between these two options, I prefer alternative two.
Yeah.
Well, a question I had about the competition center area for the sportsplex, the two parcels on the bottom of that in pink on alternative one, are those both currently owned by that person? And does he want to turn that into commercial to support the complex?
To answer your question, no. He does not currently own it. But I do know that you are going to have a revised. He does not currently own it, but I do know that you are going to have a revised development agreement come back to you because he has purchased additional land or will be purchasing additional land. It's under contract. I don't know if it perfectly aligns with that light purple boundary, but it does, and it's also picking up some other land off Inova that he owns.
So the red transition in alternative two reflects maybe the...
Yeah, the top purple where it says Wake Competition Center, that's the actual parcel now. The leather light purple one below that, that's one that I believe he has under contract. The dark purple one to the right, he owns that one, he actually owns the one just south of that as well. And that is all going to be included in an upcoming development agreement to expand his development that may be coming actually next month, y'all.
And the apartment complex that we approved in that, is that the one shown in that dark brown, alternative one?
Yes, that is the apartment complex that's already approved.
I mean, I think it makes sense when you, when you think about a place that's an attraction for sporting events and things like that, having something right beside the event center, like a hotel maybe in that red area, retail for, for, you know, people getting food and things like that, it just seems like common sense to me.
The big change is, is to guess that people would want to live that close to the airport. An ordinance is there for a reason.
Well, I mean, it's convenience versus sound, you know, weighing that. And I think, you know, the market will tell us if they want to live there, and if they do, then they'll build it, and if they don't, then they won't build any more of them, I guess, right? I mean, it's just something that will have to be weighed. I think there's demand, enough demand for it, enough people who don't care, and the buildings are, technology's there to keep the sound out for the most part.
Except when they buzz your airport. Every once in a while in Savannah, we think, are they landing? But most of the time, you don't even realize them.
Telling American to get rid of the MD-80s.
Yeah.
Delta. Nice planes, but they're so old. Comments on this one?
So just one question.
Yeah.
Greenway, is that going to connect to the greenway on the other side, on the south side?
I can answer. There's actually not a greenway. So oddly enough, again, gave them permission to take everything that they heard and develop something and didn't really provide a lot of direction, honestly, because we wanted the process to define it, not staff. There used to be a greenway on our greenway plan years ago, right here, as part of the transportation plan. It was oddly enough removed and put onto McCrimmon as a multi-use path. There, through this, there would likely be a recommendation to add a greenway back.
You mentioned greenway, that's why I asked the question, that is, would this be getting connected to the one that already exists going up to the Crabtree right now?
Yes, it would ultimately connect somehow there, and as part of the greenway plan, there's actually connections moving over towards Lake Crabtree as well, on where that large blue parcel is. There's some as part of the transportation plan, showing some general connections and something over there as well. So yeah, I think it was a neat kind of integration of taking comments and seeing where it evolved.
Yeah. And after we get through the sub-areas, we're going to be doing the town-wide land use plan, so we're not just going to leave this green segment in the middle of, of the town. So we'll look for opportunities to connect it into a larger system. All right, so the TOD East, alternative one, we're continuing that existing development pattern. Again, we're maintaining the UDO for the airport noise overlay, so no residential. It's really all primarily office. We're supporting continued commercial growth along NC-54. We have this open space area that's created by the McCrimmon flyover, so we're going to get the sort of parcels that, tough to access, tough to get to, it's likely just be open space. Alternative two, it's the TOD connection, so thinking of BRT along NC-54 and potential for a link to light rail. What we did here is we're taking TOD development, and the thought is instead of having it sort of come east-west, what I think it, what it does now is it sort of comes in through here. We've changed the orientation to bring it north-south to connect into, into the college. So that's really the, the sort of deviation here. So we're looking at TOD connections that would connect Wake Technical Community College with the bus stop and potential train stop, still providing some office uses here that could augment and supplement some of the uses happening at the RTP campus. So the emphasis here is on TOD development, mix of uses would require modification to the UDO to have that residential component. You know, we'll never get to the height requirement from the FAA here, but it's that residential piece that's the, the issue. Well, so this TOD, so TOD mixed use, not like the, I guess not unlike the mixed use in, in the town center area. I think we envision here, instead of a mix of uses in the upper floors, it's more of residential uses, can provide housing for students, housing at the, at the BRT line, the bus stop, the train stop, and opportunity for some multifamily. But the TOD aspect would be some ground floor, non-commercial uses.
Having a hard time envisioning.
So you're saying that at the ground floor, it's all transportation-related?
No, it'd be like, it could be restaurants, it could be retail, it could be an office.
What's the zoning now in that TOD area for mixed use? Special center zoning?
It's either corridor, over in this particular area, it's either corridor, commercial, or industrial management, or office institutional, kind of all blends in here, and I can't remember which one. I know Wake Tech's conditional, O N I. The sheets is corridor, commercial.
When we say orange here, though, we're not saying transit-oriented, we're saying, saying mixed use for this, for this transit corridor.
Yeah, when people think of TOD development, you think mixed use. Typically, you have your retail use on the bottom, office and/or multifamily on the upper stories.
You would get off of a subway stop, you know.
You know, if I need to go run into, grab a beer as I'm waiting for the next train, I can do that, or if I'm hopping off at lunch, I'm grabbing, you know, a sandwich or something. Those are the opportunities that you have, but you could also have...
High foot traffic in general.
Yeah, I mean, very akin to Grace Park in some ways, the commercial component of it, not the residential, something similar to that.
Yeah, just to reiterate the zoning question, Courtney was right, it's mostly a mix of, it's almost like 80% office and institutional back here. There's some small commercial, there's a bank at that corner, an existing bank, and then a small amount of industrial zoning. So it's kind of a hodgepodge of different, different things right now. The TOD area from the TOD plan actually extends into this TOD East area, however, residential can't happen, so it's, it's almost like a moot point.
So if we wanted to zone that orange area today, we would just call it like Business Activities Center?
It would have the TOD, essentially, we would, we would keep that TOD designation that's already there in our zoning map. It would just be like TOD West, you know, it would just basically extend that over. Yep.
Just poses too much confusion.
We're trying to be creative, I guess.
Just too many acronyms to keep track of.
Well, no, I mean, they do have specific differences, but...
Losses right now, or what?
Original, the history, I think, is that eons ago, when we were still looking at light rail, Marsfield Chamber of Commerce suggested this intersection as an alternative space for a railroad stop. So that, that's the genesis. So now we're still thinking that if, if there's a high-density area around here, transport-oriented, it would encourage either a high-speed bus stop and/or with the, with the diesel proposal, it would be a stop here as well.
So would it be chicken and egg that we could potentially build property, retail, housing before that's...
That's the potential.
That's a huge concern. Or how would we accommodate that?
So, couple things. So one, we don't know where our commuter rail program is. Wake, the Wake Transit Plan is currently being updated, so I think that's an important piece of information. We are also doing a public transit study right now that is just kicking off. You will receive a postcard in the mail, maybe today, maybe tomorrow? I don't know if you've got, y'all are looking at me. So clearly, it hasn't arrived in your post office yet, but there's actually going to be open house, there's actually a survey that you can take associated with that. And oddly enough, with maybe the light rail not moving forward now, that then is going to free up a bunch of money that can go to BRT, this is Bus Rapid Transit, and that actually will benefit us potentially because they'll take the line further north, and we may be able to capitalize on other people's losses becomes our gain when it comes to the world of transportation pots of money. So we may end up with BRT. The, BRTs are, they're building it kind of in the city, but instead of us building an additional lane on 54 for cars, an additional lane on 54 is built for buses. So it has its own dedicated lane, there's usually, you know, actual stops for it, and it runs similar to a commuter rail, but it's just wheels, and you don't have to worry about trains. So that may be an opportunity for this area, and with the TOD on the other side, there's an opportunity for that to actually be a potential bus station as well. So it's like a chicken and an egg thing, as you said, do you plan for it as if it's going to come to make sure you have the right, everything in place? Or do you run the risk of having something built that's completely incompatible, that then prohibits, because you're not going to have the proper density for getting those stops?
I'm sorry, with that question, did you plan for parking that would take into consideration the use of buses? So does it adjust the parking in the spot? Because if I'm a student going, if that's the primary thing, we're thinking of these guys, if I have a car and I'm going to do that, or a bus, I'll probably take the car. So is there any kind of limitations in how we build it to have fewer parking spaces or anything like that that would encourage folks to have the behavior that we would want to, you know, have? Or is it that we're going to build both and they won't use the bus?
You would have to build adequate parking because this would be a stop as well. So for example, if there's a Marsfield resident that wanted to drive here, leave their car, so you're going to have parking dedicated for that service as well. Now, do you run the risk of somebody driving here and parking there and then going to that? Yes, but you run that risk with any type of parking space anywhere, you know, that people conveniently park. I mean, think about, and I know when I was college, I parked far away where the spot was free, the area town was a bit shady, but it cost me nothing, and I had a bike. So, I mean, my first part of my commute was literally my car, second part of my commute was my bike. That was completely fine with me. Was I supposed to do that? Absolutely not. But I absolutely was not going to pay for parking. I had, I just adamantly refused to do that. So I think there's going to be certain things that you're, there's no control that we're really going to have. There's no way we can mitigate that type of stuff, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
It is, I'm just thinking about overall for that line, if we're able to build a separate lane for buses, totally different thing to build it for cars, which is what would help the majority, or is that just...
It's looking for opportunities.
Not a state road.
So I would say, right now, an additional lane for cars would be great. 20 years from now, an additional lane for buses is going to be great. When you have 60-some-odd people moving in here every single day, there's a no amount of just lanes that you can build to get us from point A to point B. So it's going to have to, you're going to have to have this evolution from my car to public transit. At some point, it's going to become so miserable to drive around here, that there's going to have to be that shift. And we're not there yet, you know?
Getting close.
She doesn't drive here in New Orleans.
But I mean, it will have to be the point where it's not just, you know, think about it, what I mean, it used to take me, when I'll leave here at night, it takes me about 30 minutes to get home. Some mornings, it can take me an hour and 15 minutes to get here. So you have to say, at what point will people say, you know, what I wouldn't do? Me personally, I would love to be able to leave at 5:00, sitting on a bus for an hour, you know, get to a commuter stop and then drive just a little bit home. That's an hour productivity that I'm losing, that's the way I see it while sitting and driving. But you never know, it's just, when are we going to hit that point? And once it gets miserable enough, we'll hit that point. But there's a lot of complaining, but nobody's really miserable yet. They're just not enjoying it. There's got to be that shift. And so really, building lanes prohibits that shift that's needed.
But the reality is, people who go there every morning, they, they do feel miserable because of just two lanes right now, construction going on, but I agree with you that as population in this area is going to grow, there is already demand for, you know, triangle transit, the buses, right, that go.
Even though the frequency is terrible, it is on jam pack.
So I, I do see that, that happening more and more.
Imagine if you're at an intersection and you've now watched, you know, because you can stick, sit at some of these intersections for 30 minutes, imagine if you now watch two buses go by you? Is it not suddenly appealing to think about that there may be another option? And so they're not even visually seeing benefits. So if you add a lane for buses only, and you're seeing buses go by you, and you're still sitting in your car, that's going to be a bit of a switch, too. But most of us grew up in suburbia, I mean, I know there are transplants here, but everybody loves their car. A lot of people have more than one car, you know, they love their spare car. I'm not pointing, I mean, I know a ton of people who do. I mean, it's just the way we operate. We have large garages, we have large driveways, and it's convenient, you know? We have a car that we may drive to work, and we have a car, or a truck that we pull our boat on the weekends, and that's completely fine, we have the ability to do that. But we're going to eventually get to the point where we're going to have to have a shift, and we kind of as planners and as the planning and zoning board, need to think ahead of where we're going to be. Are we going to position ourselves? Are we going to be kind of, you know, smacking our foreheads 20 years from now and be like, why didn't we?
Let me get one thing straight, right? So this yellow zone will also let some retail to be developed there.
Yeah.
So I, I personally think, to the other side of 54, which we are not talking about, if we ever get to developing that piece in a, you know, more structured way, we would want some kind of retail that people could go to, right? As opposed to, you know, just the shack is down there, you know, just that one shack being, being the only option. Pop shack, no.
The barbecue, the barbecue place.
Yeah.
Smokies.
Smokies, that's right.
It's a good barbecue.
I know, I'm saying that's the only option, right? But you could have more options that people could go to, depending upon what we develop on the other side of 54.
Yeah, I think the biggest difference between the town center and like a TOD area is this becomes a vibrant neighborhood. People are living here, they're either commuting from here or passing through here as commuters. It's not going to be the destination, the town center is, it's not going to be a community focal point, but it's going to be a mixed-use area.
I think when you think about the Community College being right there, the first person signing up to buy that land and develop multifamily is going to be, you know, student housing, corporate, you know, corporate developers, because that kind of combination of opportunity there just makes perfect sense, and there's nothing like it over there, so.
Yeah.
And, 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 you know, students won't mind living under, under a fly zone. If it means they can walk to work, walk to the restaurant, walk to the bus station, walk to school, yeah, exactly, so.
So the difference between alternative one and alternative two is that alternative two has some residential.
Correct.
And that's a change, you know, that's something that we had not thought about before. The other thing I'd like to think about is kind of the flip side of the coin to Tim's question. If we don't zone this as TOD, anybody could come in and do, and make it more difficult to be transported.
Yeah, so...
What story is there?
Yeah, currently, I'm going to bulk of it is zoned office and institutional, so if if somebody wanted to come in and build an office building, you know, now, that's one story. Begin. Um, and there's not that there's anything wrong with that. Is that just going to yield us the best planning results X years down the road?
Is that storage place that part of already the red part or the yellow part or orange? Maybe the storage right next to the school is right?
Part of the red.
It's red. Um, fine. Yeah, it's red. It's part of the red on that one. And it's, yeah, it's red on both of them. And understand, like Smokies, when 54 is widened and this part of 54 is rewidened, you're, we're losing several of those uses in homes.
Personally like alternative two. Yeah. Funny as time, if I'm still around, I'll be in my electric powered pod, self-driving anyway, so.
No, yeah. Courtney's described a bleak picture for my trips to Costco.
Number of Teslas in the town now?
Like the, um.
The, the road connection here?
Yeah.
Okay. Sure. Yeah.
They get off at the, you know, track, but also if there's people that are wanting to get to forty, they can just.
It's intersection and go out.
That's not going to be a nice clean route, but it does avoid, um, you know, railroad area for them.
Totally. Especially people who just want to go to a taxi. That works.
Or the other, the other offices there too.
Yeah. And I think once we get into exploring the, how much land and how deep these buildings are, um, we can look at, maybe it's a T-intersection here, or maybe it's that connection. We'll look into where we think that can occur. It's likely either alternative is going to have some type of internal roadway network. It's just a big area of land.
Evan, do we need to go circle back to the town center or?
Yeah, I think, well, now we can open it up to just any discussion, anything we didn't, we feel like we've left unaddressed. Let's just, uh.
But we sort of hovered through the town center a bit, but maybe, buddy, you want to add anything?
I mean, I, I, I want to see the density in there. And I struggle with the notion of. Having lived in a very dense country, having parking down and shops up, I've seen that. I've also seen other places where you have shopping down and parked up. That is also possible. And I don't see many people think about that option in the US. You have a, you know, a path just to put your car on top and have shops down. Uh, those options also exist. I mean, I don't know which one is better, but, uh, I think, if I have to just choose between one and two, I would go with two.
Most of our, um, mixed-use developments today would crush.
I get.
Probably a little more expensive, uh, under our standards.
Perhaps, yeah, yeah. But you know, e- even if it is, even if you park down, as long as you have a reasonable way to get people up to these shopping places, uh, I don't see that necessarily being a problem. And in fact, I was in Canada last month. There, they have a lot of places where they do park under. And they are not, they are, I mean, the way they have designed it, it doesn't look shabby. Uh, and, and you can, and the shopping and residential, whatever that may be on the top, is, is nicely marketable from where they are.
So, I mean, so that's not restricted here, right?
It is not. I was just thinking about density and parking.
So are you suggesting that we put rules as to where parking would be in, into the plan or into the ordinance around it?
Yeah, I mean, so.
To force that to happen or?
Right. So I was trying to do, instead of creating an structure that is totally on the side somewhere, right? Right now, the structure based upon all the things we have seen is around Jeremiah Park, Jeremiah Street.
Yep.
Right? I don't like that location of Jeremiah Street being the parking place because it is kind of in the center of everything. And, and it takes you, it away from things that you would need to develop there. If you move that parking, let's say towards, uh, I know we want to preserve that single-family area, but let's say we move it towards one of the yellow zones back. You still can have parking away from the center zone. It is still walkable and you can still do what you are looking to do. Right? So i- if you are talking about an independent structure, then I would still prefer it somewhere along the railway corridor, uh, rather than in the center of the town.
Yeah. I think we'd have to look at, um, well, one, your ordinance probably has off-premise parking. So we'd want it, I think, kind of be consistent with that. You wouldn't have to. Um, but five hundred feet is, seems typical. Um, so I would think you want people to, again, the parking needs to be convenient. Um, and we need to maximize the potential. There'll still be on-street parking throughout all of this. That's the other piece of this. Um, I envision on-street parking everywhere. Um, but the parking garage or structure, is it multiple? Is it one? Is it two? Those are the types of questions we'll find out when we start getting this into three D.
I mean, if you create parking spaces like the Durham Tobacco Farm, uh, Tobacco, uh, industrial park area, you know, they are big buildings. They look nice, even though the parking, it's a parking building, but they look nice because of the brick exterior to it, right? Uh, we could do that. And, and if you look at the way they have done it, there is parking, there is shopping. And, and we are talking about boutique shopping. We are talking about, you know, uh, beer stores and things like that, that kind of creates that vibrancy within the space. Uh, that should be really what we should strive at.
I went down to Morgan Street last month and they've got the, I think it's Morgan Street, the Morgan Street food, that they have down there. Um, it was five thirty in the afternoon when I got there. And, um, you know, it wasn't like completely packed with people inside, but there was still parking findable in that general area on the streets. Uh, there's a couple of parking lots along some of the businesses as well. It didn't see, it didn't feel to me like it was overwhelmed with parking places versus businesses. And, you know, I felt like the balance was actually pretty good there. And, you know, when you think about two to three, maybe four stories with retail on the bottom for most of these places. Residents, you know, maybe on the backside or something. I don't think this would be problematic from a parking perspective, um, and even at some of the busier times of day.
I think we ought to look at what Durham has done, what Apex has done. So if you look at Apex Downtown, their downtown, from a size point of view, seems to be closer to our downtown size, maybe a little bit more, but, you know, somewhere in the same proximity, right? But they have done a good enough decent job of not uprooting everything, but also creating all these boutique places that you could go shop. And you could be more than five hundred meters away and still people like to go and walk there.
Why not stair-step it? I mean, I, I'm not sure why to take on the expense. Appetite is for this? I mean, that you walk down the street to Grace Park and there's open, uh, and there's turnover. So is there an appetite for that? I don't know. Um, you know?
I, I still think that we're, you know, building density into areas that are already overburdened and there's not a solution on the horizon for those. So a little bit concerning. I think you could build out a option one or alternative one and assuming that there is a mobility and assuming that there is, and, um, your, your, your thought around looking at the item in yellow, um, you could always repurpose that and, and build out beyond if, if demand requires, but why take on the expense upfront? Likely the residential part of it will get built first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Residential parts of this will probably get built first and the retail will probably be later. Um, my main concern when I look at this is, okay, we got a bunch of red area here. Past, everything we've done that's mixed-use allows for a hundred percent residential apartments to be built on it. And so we've gotten in a situation where our mixed-use areas haven't really become mixed-use for the most part. So, um, along with the land use plan, do we have a coinciding plan to enforce some of that mixed variety?
So based, though, once we get further into some of the policies and goals that will come out of the plan, I very much so suspect that we will see, making sure that we have a balance, and it won't be balanced necessarily within a parcel, but balanced within districts, you know, areas, you know, for example, Neighborhood Activity Center. As it's currently designed, you could have one hundred percent office, you could have one hundred percent retail, you could have one hundred percent residential. Um, I think that could be fine if one parcel's residential and fine if another parcel, I mean, just the way the financing world works. Um, but do you then, with appropriate balance that you can walk to all of them? So if I did live in, you know, a house over on the southwest corner, could I walk to my office if I lived, you know, through the northeast corner or something like that? And so that is what I think we'll probably see out, but we haven't gotten there yet. Um, there also is a Main Street coming, it'll be sometime this spring, a Main Street zoning district. It's a mixed-use district that will be coming through and there'll be parameters to it as well. So if somebody wanted to come in and do something now that doesn't match, um, our current zoning, but was really cool, um, they have a district similar to the aviation landing rezoning case, um, that was brought to this board recently.
I, I'd love to see that red area be forced into parcels on the first floor that are small office and/or retail as, as like a no exception kind of policy. And it's just contiguous. You walk down that street, it's just one thing after another. Us to be able to actually truly enforce that.
Yeah. You can design your code so that it will set, you know, your minimum height, you know, could very well be a two-story height. You know, you can establish minimum stories as well. Um, so I mean, there's ways to build our code, um, that can ensure that will happen. And this kind of feedback is important because they're taking notes now. So when they're making recommendations, these are the types of recommendations that they can make. Um, but really, this is, when you get to these two districts, and I think several of you have hit on this perfectly, you have to make a decision, you know, do you want, you know, most of the red to be buildings? Or do you want a fifty fixing, fifty fifty mix of buildings and parking? You know, or are you willing to say, okay, all red is buildings, but then we're going to forego townhomes, you know, along, you know, Jeremiah so we can have adequate parking? There's going to be trade-offs in these scenarios and recognizing that in order to have parking structure, there probably is going to be a public investment, but also recognizing there's a big giant green space in here. So there's going to be public investment in here anyway. And if you're having a large event, how are you going to park that event? So you have to have parking for that as well. So there's, you know, and that could be your surface parking that you've put somewhere. I mean, I, it's not that, these aren't impossible hurdles to get over. It's just decisions and guidance points. You know, what is one to two stories, the direction? You know, is it taking the height of the library that's under construction and continuing that down? You know, with a couple of two stories? Or is it more three stories? Um, and the parking is going to be the key to that. You know?
Just to play devil's advocate, right? To the other side of Town Hall, we approve these single-family homes that are going to go right next to someone else, right?
Stadler Meyer property.
Stadler Meyer property, that was approved. So there are residences right here. There is already residents behind Jeremiah Park going all the way towards, uh, Sublimond City, right? There are residents on the other side of Church, I'm just outside this square boundary, there is already residents. So we have enough residential properties surrounding this space, right?
Well, and you get, if you read their report, the very last page, you know, really broke it down. Will those residences most likely support alternative one? Yes. Will they support alternative two? Most likely no. You need more residents to support more retail. So those, I mean, again, so those are the decisions that you are going to have to make. The more heads you have, the more successful retail ultimately is. Understanding this landscape of retail is changing dramatically. You know, um, it's either a very specialized boutiquey or it's I order it from my computer or my smartphone and it's delivered to my front door, not in seven days, within forty-eight hours.
Yeah, but I, and that's, that's where I'm stuck, right? I don't see this being a traditional retail space, right? Not Walmarts or H Mart or any one of those being in there. I, I, I would, I envision this town space to be more the boutiquey kind of space because that's where you are going to get young people in, old people in, all kinds of people wanting to come there because they want individual experiences in a, in a small enough setting.
Correct. And understanding both those groups, both the older group as well as the younger group, don't want to hop in their car to do it.
They want to live like.
There is a reason you have, you know, Del Webb is coming into this community all over and building homes. They are able to capture, you know, a market and then they build in all these activities within their community. And they're not having to hop in a car to attend those activities unless it's driving to the clubhouse. You know, there's a reason millennials are paying through the roof to buy and rent in downtown Raleigh. And it's because they can walk to work, they can scooter to work, they can bike to work, they can bus to work, and they can hit a restaurant afterwards on their way home.
Don't have to Uber home from the bar.
Yeah, so those, those are two growing groups you just mentioned, and neither one want to hop in their car to do it.
I think House Levine earlier, Devin's mentioned, um, you know, these would be, you know, their vision is more destination retail, experience retail. That's where things are headed. Your traditional retail's changing like Courtney mentioned. And so these would, this would be more experience-based. Uh, you, the whole, the whole aesthetic would play a major part in that experience. And so, um, they would factor that into whatever ultimate detail three D rendering they produce. Yeah. Well, I guess something, something, Rob, you mentioned that I, I agree with. You want to have visual interest on the street. So you don't want, um, a long brick facade. Uh, you don't want to walk by the entrances of apartment complexes. Um, you want storefronts. Probably here more than the TOD area, I think it's, I wouldn't want to see residential on the ground floor. Um, but where I see communities misstepping is requiring retail or restaurants. Um, I don't think you want an office like ours. You know, we're a planning firm. We come to work, we go up in our hole and we come out at five o'clock. Um, a dentist office, uh, you know, every fifteen minutes, they're turning over, uh, people. They, they generate activity on the sidewalk. And so where I think it's going to be important, we look at that land use. Um, and, um, ideally, it's going to be this experiential, but it may be appropriate for some type of service uses and office uses, but, um, ultimately what we want is an area that's sort of visually engaging and, and interest and smaller storefronts. And, and these are all things that we can, um, we get to implementation after the, the land use plan is adopted. You get into zoning and you, we look at this mixed-use district and we start to set maximums. How wide can a store, uh, should a storefront be? What's the fenestration? Uh, how much transparency do we want in the storefront? All of those things cities are regulating. Um, what some cities have done, you mentioned the residential will come on first. I know there's some cities that will, uh, allow a developer to provide flex space on the ground floor and say, you know, you can put some rental units in here for the first couple of years, but once this area, um, starts to take off, you know, those units are gone. And we want to, uh, make sure we have non, non-residential uses. And they've even done that in the upper floors. So it's, uh, but I think the biggest mixed step is requiring retail, requiring resident, uh, entertainment or restaurants.
Versus what do you mean? Like, like an, like a small office?
Yeah, like a, any type of, there's some, like a, a tax office. I mean, those people, I mean, people who.
I'm, I'm fine with that too.
That just don't generate sidewalk.
I'm saying something that's of commercial interest of some sort on the first floor.
You want uses that are generating foot traffic.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So you think option two, alternative two, with the structured parking is going to be more conducive to making it more vibrant and attracting that sort of activity?
Yeah, I mean, definitely. Um, but again, there's the trade-off in, in cost. Alternative one, I think, could get you there, but something someone raised, I think that mixed residential up at the top on Jeremiah, that would almost have to be all surface parking.
Think, I think the green on the corner, the orange on the other. I think the green on the corner, the orange on the other, turning those to dedicated parking, letting people go on the outskirts to get there, having the experience of being able to walk all the way through the corridor, and keeping some of that residential in the orange area, or a mix of residential and parking, residential and parking, something like that. Lookable solution to some extent.
If I heard you correctly, you said the orange, all the oranges around Jeremiah become surface parking, is that what you said?
If you wanted the, if you wanted, if you wanted option one with the outcome of option two, I guess would be, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just looking at the size of those lots, so you can get a lot of cars on those if they were surface parking lots. But again, what you likely wouldn't get would be sort of owner-occupied condominiums as part of a residential component. Again, those owners are going to want to make sure, I think someone said, walk in with their groceries and not have to walk across a parking lot that they're sharing with the rest of the town center. So it's, yeah.
When I get a think about this, if we foresaw the idea of Martin Wyng, Kerry Day sort of thing, by having parking lots, advocating one way or the other, this is a kind of one, but parking on street, on streets.
And parking, surface-level parking on Jeremiah Street.
Yes, partially blocked out, but then also incorporated in Jeremiah Street is a location people can gather and, you know, like eat and shop, you know, kind of special. These, what, we're not carried, we're not used to, we're not used to, not to.
Devin, do you have enough from us? Do you want any?
Yeah, I think so. I think the input's been great. Yeah, I think we have enough to, you know, refine these a little and then bring it forward with staff, for sure.
Questions for Devin?
Just to conclude on that, are you leaning to surface parking with the advantage, with the, sorry, parking along Jeremiah Street with benefits of option two? Is that what you're leaning towards? Just to get a, where are the options?
One plus type of thing?
Huh?
An option one plus?
Option one plus, right, or, yeah.
Yeah, my thought is, is yes, is surface parking where we can. Have flexibility to do that.
To me, that option gives that, what you just said, right, that option is, if residential is something people want as people more and more, then we could take that Jeremiah Street parking space right now and convert it into structured parking or residential at that time.
This isn't going to happen overnight, boom, it's going to have to evolve.
Oh, I thought you were going to do this.
No.
Well, we've talked about the investment on the parking deck. I think that's part of option two. I kind of lean towards alternative two as it is with the higher density on the road front, on that corridor, investing in parking decks where we can, you know, to the extent that's necessary. That orange section along Jeremiah Street be self-supporting parking and housing.
Not hideous, the parking structure.
Yeah. Like I said, they would blend in to the surrounding buildings.
Yeah, big buildings.
Something.
Not a concrete monster.
Not a concrete monster.
There's a town we're working in outside of Indianapolis called Brownsburg that, very similar sort of town center, it's around their Town Hall. And there's an area where they used to have these inline historic buildings that were torn away and replaced with the Walgreens and CVS. And so when we did their plan, we planned for sort of a new town center to replace the one that they tore away in the 90s. And it included a vision for multifamily with a preferred approach for structured parking, but sort of having a fallback as surface parking. Developers saw it, and the parking deck was built last summer, the buildings are out of the ground, and so may not have to be public investment, it might, but I'll tell you this, if you don't articulate the vision, you're not going to get it. So if we plan for surface parking, surface parking will probably be what we get, and that's the whole point of this exercise, is to kind of think about what that vision is and what we want. And if we fall short of that, that's fine, but if we just say, hey, we're fine with surface parking, one-story buildings, you know, we might get what we asked for, which isn't what we wanted, so.
Maybe we could have the Carvana, or the ones in Japan, right? Where you drive the car up, and you put money in.
Vending machine?
Take your car to the right parking space whenever you come.
That's how they're building car, they're building car dealerships like that now.
Actually, there is one, the Carvana shop in Raleigh has exactly that.
You sound like the creative developer that we need to invest in this kind of space.
Just go in and type in your car number, it brings the car.
Is Carvana here in your region?
Is it Raleigh or Durham?
It's at the intersection, 440, but you can see it.
Yeah, it's at 440 in Atlantic.
Yeah, you can see it as you go along.
Because you don't have to talk to anyone to buy a car, so there's that appeal, but...
Nowadays, sell car too.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Devin. All right, thank you very much. Looking forward to working with you as we dial these in.
Thank you.
Somebody has opted to abandon Morrisville in retreat to the not-so-awesome town next door to us. Less awesome, is that a better way to describe it? I don't know, I also live in a town next.
Less cozy.
So I don't know if I'm like, kind of knocking where I live too. No, but I just want to say from where, when she initially sent an email letting me know, and I was like, ah, and I'm like, far away or close by? That was like my initial response, and she said, close by, explained why they were moving, it makes sense, and there really are probably 30 homes in Morrisville that are one-story. There's not a whole lot, there's really one little neighborhood as a general rule. We have no one-story townhomes except in Cary, right next door, so, but she's not even moved to a townhome. I just knew kind of how it was going, so, say from where I said, thank you. I know you always read your agenda, which means a lot from us. The number of hours that go into agenda prep is a bit insane, and always had very insightful questions along the way. Couldn't ask for a better planning and zoning board member. And then having you as a chairwoman was pretty awesome, too. So I think I've used awesome five times in that last two minutes, that puts me in my 10-year-old realm of vocabulary, I believe. But I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for your time, thank you for commitment, and I certainly will miss you. But I'll turn it back over to the chair in case the chair or any of the other board members have any other comments.
Embarrass you even more. I think you're awesome. And as Courtney said, you always did your homework. Always very, very pleasant, but managed to hold the developers' feet to their fire, especially when looking out for pedestrians and parks and people in general. And we did have a brief discussion before the meeting that she's not actually becoming a Cary resident, she's going to be one of our Morrisville moles who happens to live in Cary. Or a sleeper.
Morrisville mole, is that an hour and an official term to go along with awesome?
I think so, or a sleeper unofficially, and we look forward to calling her back when we've managed to attract Del Webb to Morrisville. But thank you so much, Arlene, and we do have this token of the towns and our boards.
Like I said, ours was prettier.
It is. See? It was right there. Well, I am really going to miss, I haven't joined it so much, one of the fun parts was the developers. I don't hate developers, I just think they need to be here and there. And I just wish I would. Best in the future.
I'm going to miss a lot, miss mommy that much.
But come on, Marty, you're not going to miss those emails.
Yes. You know, your emails are really nice and light. Never seen any appropriate words sent in my direction in any email ever coming from you, so I will not miss your emails actually at all.
Brad, come on, you know you're going to miss them.
Said, from where we said, I'm like, it was red. So it's actually really nice for where we sit when people ask additional questions. That's what we're here for, we're here to educate, so. Okay, well, I'm going to move on to the less exciting stuff. Well, actually, no, I forgot, we have the vice chair appointments. Because our vice chairwoman is leaving, we need to appoint, make a recommendation for an appointment for a new vice chair, which will forward on to council. In the event that Peter is not here, and we don't have a vice chair appointed for some reason, there is a process, you do vote amongst yourselves at the meeting to appoint somebody to act in that spot, but we wanted to fill it as quickly as possible. So Marty's going to bring a ballot for everybody to fill out their preferences. She's, yeah, and you can only vote for it if you're an active city member for tonight, not an alternate, so not everybody's going to have an opportunity.
Technically, you should. Did you draw?
I can't vote, right?
They're voting, oh, yeah, Sanjay can't vote. Did you hand Sanjay one?
No, good.
Okay. Do you mind picking them up, Marty?
Can I make a suggestion that you don't vote for me? Just for other things that are swirling right now, I think save us a little bit of time if we can. Not that anyone was tempted to, but, you know.
Not that anybody was tempted to. You have like a 33% chance of it occurring, I think with the three people that are there.
Yeah, so maybe one vote, I figure I should get that one vote corrected in a different direction.
Don't vote for him.
You're influencing the vote, man. This is collusion.
No, I think we're allowed to, I think we're allowed to take ourselves out of the pool, I believe.
Collusion.
Okay, so we have three votes for Lee Langston, so he just learned an important lesson. Make sure that you miss a meeting with an important vote. But, I will inform him of his recommendation, and then we'll send it on to council, probably at their April meeting, to put that on their agenda. So moving on to the newsletter for February, I'm going to note that a specially use permit application was submitted, but I'm not going to talk about it, nor am I going to answer any questions, but it is public record that one was submitted, but because it comes before this board, I just cannot talk about it. There were no administrative approvals, administrative being staff level in this particular instance, but there was a zoning and land use map amendment for the parcels that are located on Morrisville Carpenter Road and Davis, and that was the apartment complex that this board did recommend an aisle for. There were significant changes that occurred between the time that this board saw it and when council acted on it. I think there was probably about four months between when you provided a recommendation and council voted on the item, but it did ultimately include affordable housing units, workforce housing to be specific, which will be privately subsidized, 20 units. They also are either going to provide in-lube funds or build the greenway that's actually on the town of Cary's property to the south, and then build that, and if they can, get the appropriate Pet Head crossings if DOT will approve them on Davis Drive as well. And that was in addition to some other concessions that they made along the way in order to meet both some of the concerns from this board as well as some of the concerns from For the comprehensive transportation plan update, actually, there has been one change. Council has actually adopted the comprehensive transportation plan, it happened Tuesday night. It was adopted with an appendix of changes. We're going to send those off to the consultant, the consultant's going to make those changes, and then we're going to move it back to council to make sure we captured everything correctly, since there were work sessions held two to three times a month since last August. Pretty much an hour of every meeting was dedicated to that, and making those changes. And then, as I previously mentioned earlier, this evening, the public transportation study that has kicked off. What's not on here is just, I'll provide a quick update, is the affordable housing study, our plan. We did receive multiple submissions through our RFQ process. We are going to be having interviews with a refined list of the people that submitted next week, and hopefully, we'll make a selection here soon, and then start the process in May. Overall, the timeline will actually end sooner than initially anticipated, and a lot of it has to do with some of the public feedback we received through the land use plan, we're able to shave down, not have quite the extensive outreach that was initially anticipated when council allocated the funds for the project, with that as moving forward. And we'll have an adoption soon thereafter, the transportation study, and it'll be adopted most likely prior to the land use plan update, so you may be able to capture some policies in there as well. If you have any questions about any of these items, I'm happy to answer.
So the CBS, the apartment project and CBS.
Yeah, so the violation that I, the town issued to CBS is 50% resolved, so they have recorded an easement, I believe I got it last week, over to, between the apartments and CBS, but they have not recorded the easement heading to the south. It was one condition, so when I issued the violation, the violation applied to both the western and southern boundaries of CBS. It's actually fairly difficult because it's an investment company that owns, but they also now officially want something from the town. We have some easements on their property that, and it looks like they're trying to sell it again, and I have said that I will look into it once they solve their violation. So hopefully, we'll make a little more traction on that as well. Haven't issued any additional fines, they have not paid any fines today either, but they were able to resolve 50% of it.
What about the, I think Peter had talked about changing that intersection on the other side of, because they don't align at that, that East Drive and, so that, so traffic is more, that must be one.
So there was really three potential access points. One was a fire access only, we did not get the CVS. That will go away when they submit their site plan. The other two, one does align, and that one's full access, the other one is right in, right out. So alignment directly across the street is not necessary because you can't, you're forced to take a right out of the site. So alignment's not important, but the other one would line up. You know, if my back is to this property and I'm staring at Taco Bell to the left or to the west side, that has to align, the one on the east side does not.
Thank you, Courtney. Going to move on to item 12. Let's start. Catherine.
I'm going to go, oh, no.
Okay, Tim. Courtney, where could we find the wake transit plan changes?
They're in draft form. I'll have to talk to Ben, I don't know where they're actually located, but I'll find that, and I'll have a link sent to everybody. located, but I'll find that and I'll have a link sent to everybody.
That's the joint P Z B and council meeting, public transportation, right?
Yes, so that is on the twenty-fifth, I believe, but, yes, on Monday, the twenty-fifth, there is a joint meeting with the planning and zoning board and town council. The exercise that will be performed there is going to almost mirror the exercise for online, that everybody else can participate. And I cannot emphasize enough how important it is for everybody to fill out the survey, have your friends fill out the survey, have your neighbors fill out the survey, have anybody who may remotely be interested in ever taking public transportation, even if only one point in their entire life. You know, let's say you break your right leg and you can't drive your car, and Uber no longer exists, and taxes don't exist, and you were forced to get from point A to point B, what would you want to do? To go in to answer that survey, it's extremely important, because it really will help define where our dollars need to be invested into what type of system.
Very much regret that I will not be able to be at that meeting. Opportunity to have a joint meeting with the council, I'll be there unfortunately.
There'll be other opportunities, so it'll be the first of many. I believe it's in June.
Oh, June, okay.
Mm-hmm. And most likely, once the consultant for the affordable housing studies, our plan is selected, there'll be another joint meeting in order to help facilitate that process as well. Joint meetings can shave four to six weeks off of a project timeline, so that's the advantage of a joint meeting.
So, item fifteen, and I might suggest, final act.
I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Well, have a second.
Have a second, Pat.
Well, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.